Welcome, and thank you for being here for our regularly scheduled Monday, August 12th, Wadsworth City School Board Meeting. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll try to make this meeting fairly quickly, otherwise, Steve, I'm going to ask you for the hand warmers. Roll call, Doug.
Julie Beatty.
Here.
Amanda Gordon.
Here.
Jill Stevens.
Here.
Tim Beck.
Here.
Gary McComas.
Here.
Thank you. And if I can get a motion for approval of signing through our July 1st Board Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Beatty?
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Gary McComas.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, turn the meeting over to Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Stevens. Couple of discussion items tonight. First, we had a request that I previously shared with you about increasing the cost for tickets for choir concerts here at the high school. Kalen Davis, our teacher, had asked to increase the cost to $8. Last year, parents, or it was $6 was the actual fee. Just to give you some context for this, and I previously had shared it in an update, the ticket sales generated about $26,000 for the high school choir program this past year. The little history on this is that we've, 2005, the cost of the ticket was $5. At some point, we stopped charging for a period of time. In 2015, it was increased to $6. The year before last, it was $722 when fees were added on with the online portal, and it went back to $6 last year. The money is used for the purchase of items, choreography, graphic projections, costumes, other things that happen throughout the year. As an example, the spring 2024 budget for the show was $11,276.44. So those ticket sales helped to offset that. The reason I'm bringing this to you for discussion, and like I had wrote in the update, there's mixed feelings on whether we should be charging fee for that type of concert to begin with. In a way, it is different than an athletic contest where we charge admission fees. The athletics are extracurricular activities. The choir concerts are part of a graded class. So there is no activity assessment fee like there is for extracurricular activities assessed for choir. There are other instructional fees that you approve for that program, but it's different. And when we initially, during the time that I have been here, I believe I was here when we weren't charging for a period, and then in 2015, when we went back to charging, it started initially as doing some reserved seating in this auditorium, some. And then what happened over time is some became the entire auditorium because our program has done so well that everybody was buying seats to make sure that they had seats to get in because we've been selling out the production. So I think the discussion for you tonight is, that I'm looking for some guidance on, is do you believe that we should be continuing with our practice of charging ticket prices? If so, are you okay with the proposed cost revision of $8 that's in front of us? If we're not okay with charging admission to concerts, then I think we have to have discussion about allocating a budget for those dollars if we expect the program to be able to operate at the level that it has historically. I don't know what type of point of comparison can be made that would be right on point. I will tell you, a high school band does not charge admission for concerts. High school band, their major fundraiser is the concession stands that they run for athletics in the fall and winter sports season. I think where this stuff kind of gets tricky is that's a huge time commitment for the parents, guardians that are involved in manning those stations for the money that's made. And so, you know, when we get into the discussion then on choir, and if we eliminate the ability for money to be generated through ticket sales, which may be the right thing to do and may align closer to some of the concerns that we've discussed here before with fees for parents and guardians, there could be implications then that kind of ripple out to some of these other organizations where we're relying on parents and guardians to be responsible for helping to man this stuff and put all this time in to generate funds that can then be used by the program. So I don't know that there's a real easy answer here. As I noted in the update that I wrote to you, I do have a concern about charging admission to an event like choir concerts based off of it being an academic class, but fully acknowledge that the history of what I presented is kind of what this has grown into during the time that I've been superintendent here as well. But it also predates my time. So I'm just looking for some guidance from you. No formal action tonight. Depending on the direction that the conversation goes tonight, we can bring back some follow-up to the next meeting, or potentially a resolution if needed that you can consider to vote on. Just looking for feedback. In the update, it suggested if anyone would like to discuss it, and I did get some feedback to ask to have it as a discussion item.
I'll go first. I guess I've always had a, kind of shook my head as to why we're charging for a performance for a class that is graded. I kind of agree with you, Andy, on that. And then as I looked at the numbers that you sent us, there was actually a surplus or profit of eight grand or more from what had been generated. And so I would, first of all, I don't think we're in the business of making money and profit on these things. So it kind of caused me to question, you know, if we're going to continue to allow charges, then, you know, why would we need an increase? You know, I guess, I'm not sure what you're saying about the rippling effect for others because, I mean, we have a really robust band boosters program, obviously, and they're doing what they're doing to support a lot of, a lot more of the activities with the bands. So I guess I'm not sure what you were thinking on that, that I might not be considering.
I can elaborate a little bit on that. I think when we get into district support organizations, and we've had this discussion as it relates to the former Y's that transitioned into PTO and some of the stuff that Y's United provided for the district, like Safety Town is an example. That's the type of thing where, and even with band boosters, I've used this example before, it's great that we have a group of people willing to raise the money, but I worry that our group of how many people are involved in that continues to dwindle. And if, as an example, that support were to go away, I think the district would then have to make a decision on, do we step up and supplement the budget that we already provide for those programs to be able to have them continue? Or do we have the program make do with whatever that reduced amount is then that they're going to have? So Safety Town is the example. We took that on when Y's United stopped doing it. They transitioned to PTO United, we added that expense and took on it because we felt like it was something that the community expected and needed. I worry a little bit about, and this has been going on, but I worry at what point does an organization that has a handful of people they're relying on to be here multiple nights a week, doing concessions, say, why are we doing this when another group's just charging admission to watch kids? You know, at what point, and if the board's going to take that away and then supplement, why are we spending all of this time? And I haven't had anybody, I want to be clear, no one from band boosters has suggested to me that that's what they would do. But I don't know that it's that far of a thing to jump to, that if all of a sudden we decide we're going to supplement choir $26,000 to replace that income, and if band boosters are having the same 10 people constantly having to cover those things, at what point in time does the system crumble? And then we're now looking at supplementing X thousand here, X thousand there. And so it's just, that's what I worry about. But I don't worry about that because anybody from band boosters, as the example, has come forward and said, we're not doing this anymore. Or think of the people outside right now, right outside of this room, that are organizing the patron drive for athletics. You know, those are the type of things that if they just went away, we'd have some decisions financially that we'd have to make with how we support these programs if we want them to stay at the level that we've come to expect and our community has come to expect. That's why I think this could have some implications with whatever the decision is. Maybe wrong, but that's where that comes from.
Well, now, it's good to reconsider. Has choir ever thought about a booster organization?
They do have a booster.
They do.
They do. They do, and they do other fundraisers. This isn't their exclusive way that they make money. Kalen, I think, brought in, what was it, over 100? I want to say it was over $100,000 in fundraisers.
Yeah, I just had to hear one second. They brought in, last fiscal year, $105,000.
So $26,000.
They spent $134,000. So I think that's the reason for that, that's for the increases because they deficit spent by almost $30,000 last year.
What were you looking at for the profit of that?
I thought I read what Kalen sent to us, there was a surplus of $8,000.
Yeah, that's the current carryover right now.
Okay, a carryover?
Yeah, they started the year with $38,000.
Okay, that's what I was.
And they ended the year with $8,000.
And Kalen also wrote, in what I shared with you previous, the spring show sold a total of 1,378 tickets. Total profit was $8,046. Breakdown of our spring concert budget was below, and that's where it was $11,276.44. So guessing that's probably what you're referencing.
I read that differently, so I'm checking. I just always worry about continuing with fees and certainly for classes like this. I mean, parents put a lot of time and effort into this already for their kids, and I have heard in the past, you know, challenges for parents to be able to bring their whole families because of, because of even the level of ticket prices that we're talking about. And I don't know, it just always kind of bothered me that I think parents and families should be able to see how their kids are progressing with the vocal music, but those were, those are some of my thoughts on that side of it, so.
Yeah, I do always wish that our parents didn't have to pay for, whether it's the football parent or the, any parent, and that's because they're already showing up the most. But I understand how cumbersome that could be.
Oh, yeah, no.
I guess from the grading perspective, the people being graded are on the stage and they're not paying. That's kind of a dumb comment, but it's true.
No, no, that's.
And then, while I, I don't have a, I don't have a difficulty with paying for the event because it's show-worthy. In fact, I would say I wish they had a second show in the spring because there's only one in there. December one is amazing, so I'm sure that sold out every single time. I'm not suggesting they should have more concerts, but that would be another option.
Sure.
And whether or not the fee is justified, I would, not justified, should be raised, I would tend to look at the recommendation of what else they need to spend on. Other things, everything costs for, so it could be just strictly that, so.
Yeah, I guess I'll share. I mean, the good news is, is that our community and our parents, they really value our fine arts programs here at Wadsworth. Any band performance I've been to has filled this auditorium. Choir performances are always filled. I know, because my kids have been in both band and choir and the drama program, that I think they do often have multiple shows because the demand exceeds the space here. So I think that's a good thing. I think it shows what we value. I don't know that there's an easy answer to this. I guess if I had one concern or something to be mindful of is if there were families that were perhaps in need, could there be a way for them to, you know, get an access code? Because I know we do like the, you go on your phone and you can book your tickets or whatever, if there was a way for some maybe families in need, if they needed it, to have an access code to get, you know, free tickets or something. But right now, as it is for, at least for choir, each student is allotted four tickets. So there is a demand. People seem to want to be here, and then I think after those tickets are sold and it's opened up to the general public. So, I mean, I think we could explore this more, as far as I'm concerned. It does, I don't know that anybody really realizes how much it actually costs to put on the music program here at the school. So I want it to be supported. If this is the only way, then I would support it. If there are other ways in which we could fund it, maybe we could look into that, but at least in the meantime, I would be in favor of at least maintaining the $6 rate. And if we need to do an increase, I guess we could discuss that.
Another comment I meant to make was, I know we have the donation from the Performing Arts, and you sent an update, which I do not have memorized. Is that an option for funds to use in any way?
That was what I was going to ask, is that, you know, if we decided to eliminate the fee and did it be supporting the program for this $26,000? We do have a donation from Wadsworth Performing Arts, $321,000 plus dollars, and I'm not sure.
Right.
Who's involved in making the decisions as to how that's going to be spent amongst all of the fine arts programs, but, I mean, that's an option if it's decided to do away with ticket sales.
I think from our conversations with the people that started the Fine Arts Foundation and with them turning the money over, and the reason that they were turning the money was, their intent was for us to continue what that money was raised for and intended to be used for, which is to supplement the program and provide capital expenses and things that the district may not be able to provide on an ongoing basis. Certainly, I don't think their intent and probably wouldn't be happy with the fact that we were using it to offset current expenses. That was not, they were pretty clear when we, when Dr. Hill and I met with them about, they were turning this over because the age of the people involved just can't manage it anymore, but they believed and asked us to continue the intent of what that foundation is for. It was not for operating expenses.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Would that be like the shell at the new place?
New curtains?
Like those kind of things?
I think it would be, I think their intent would be more for, because we did talk to them about the new auditorium, I think their intent would be more for if the shell at some point here or long into the future needed replaced over there.
Okay.
To do that, to make sure the program continues, but not necessarily for some initially. That's what the district should provide.
Pam is here. In the past, they purchased what, like a projector here that was new for us?
They helped us pay for the projector that's used by all of the, I mean, the AMZ and choir units that.
That's the background, correct.
Right, a projector for the AMZ projections and that kind of stuff. When all of our microphones became illegal frequencies because of, uh, does it exist? FCC changes, a bunch of our microphones that became illegal to use, and we kind of patched them as long as we possibly could. They helped pay for half of the new microphones, which again is used. So, yeah, I've talked to them quite a bit about, you know, how they, what kind of things they say yes to, and what kind of things they're like, and they want something that, like you said, if a shell needs replaced because it benefits all of the fine arts. Not, I wouldn't ask them, like, a fog machine, that there's one of the needs for production that would be out of trouble for our clients. So, those are the reasons.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
Do we know, like, just out of curiosity, what do other schools do? Is this a standard practice for choir to charge for tickets? Or is that some research maybe we could do?
Yeah, we could do that research. I don't know that answer.
I was going to ask the same thing, like what other school districts do, but I guess I would, you know, say, to follow up with what Tim's saying, find out if there's other options that we can look at, but if not, I think just maintaining where the price is at now, which is what, $6, as opposed to increasing it?
Okay.
I'd be more in favor of that.
I would agree with what's been said, but maintaining for right now, but I do think we need to look a little deeper into more of what other options could be available. And I think it's also a good idea, Andy, to send that out and look at not just this program, but look at some of the other programs that kind of fall into the same type of realm where there's, you know, booster support and, you know, foundation-type support, boosters, that kind of stuff. But just to get a better idea, because once you start down whichever way we go, there could be some fallout that we'd have to follow suit on. So I just think it's good that we understand the entire. And then I would have a question, and maybe it could be answered now. Have we had much feedback from, you know, the parents that are of the kids that are in it, that they're complaining about the costs? Now, they may not come to the school as an official complaint, but I just wonder if we have much feedback from the parents.
So I don't know if Steve or Pam can answer that. I will tell you the complaints that we've addressed a few times, and I think we've figured it out with this four tickets per student. Is the place selling out before all parents could get a ticket? And so, and even that was questionable, whether that's really what was in place, but that's what was happening, people were upset about, you know. And then a lot of that went into the discussion that you had when we decided to add a larger auditorium to the new building that's being built here.
Absolutely.
So, you know, this, a lot of this stuff goes back, but, you know, Steve would have been principal during a good portion of the years I talked about. Did you get complaints about cost?
No. One of the complaints that we got was, when we didn't have a reserve section was, people would just get tickets and not show up, which led us to the reserve section to go and do that and have the cost. Keeping the cost minimal was always our goal with that, but have not heard complaints about the ticketing process that we have.
Pam?
Yeah, I mean, not, you know, here or there, just like you're going to get every, any complaint. Somebody mentioned about students of needs that their parents, like, can't afford. She, that is also, she does that. She gives tickets to families that can't afford them.
Okay, good.
So she is aware of that. I don't know what we got from her, but, you know, somebody goes to scholarships, it goes to paper. Kids that can't afford to go show part of Kino. So it's not just the costumes, you know, all the music she has to purchase, that kind of stuff. So it's not just choir, art, create costumes and projections. So, yeah, she does try to make sure that those parents are needed.
It would also allow us to better balance who's coming to shows for them. So each kid gets represented and compete at the shows, each kid's families do that. So that was her reason going into that.
And she has gone to two shows, both Christmas and May, because of the amount of people that want to, the October show, the February show, don't sell out, so she didn't have to go to two shows. But there are two evenings of events, and both of them are sold out, oh, evenings.
It's a good test.
Great.
I mean, it's also good to note, too, we do have the Fine Arts Festival, which is a highlight of all of our fine arts for all of the schools. It is an opportunity, and I believe that is free, and there's band, choir, all ages that do perform at that as well.
So what I'm taking away from this is do some additional research on other schools. Look at maybe the larger picture of this outside of just choir. But for the upcoming year, leave the fee as it is, as it's been.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay, very good. I don't believe that will require any action by you then, we're not changing anything, so there won't be any follow-up that'll come back, at least on a resolution for you to vote.
Okay, good.
And I'll provide updates on the other stuff you've asked for. Thank you. This next discussion should be brief. I just wanted to note, so with this Middle High School Athletic Complex Master Plan Committee, that's something that was part, is part of our current strategic plan. There's three of you that have expressed an interest, and I just wanted to make sure that we have no problem operating that as a board-level committee, following the Sunshine rules, putting everything out. Just wanted you to be aware that that's where we're at and make sure that that's what you want before we move forward with it that way. But again, there's no issue in doing that. It just requires those things, as you know, with the Mental Health Committee, BICIM, Wadsworth, all of that. So if that's the desire, that's how we'll move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, the two that may have had an interest, but stepping back, if that's something you decide you want to be part of, we'll be running that as a committee. I'm not sure it limits. And then the last thing on here is just the Strategic Plan Implementation Update. So as on part of the details sheet, there's a link where if somebody's interested in seeing how we're doing implementing our current strategic plan, they can click on that to view. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Okay, at this time, we invite public participation. I understand we have two that would like to participate. If you want to step to the podium and give us your name and address, you can address the board.
Hello, my name is Matthew Assenti. I live at 432 Wolf Avenue. I have a daughter entering the third grade at Valley View Elementary, and my son is entering the sixth grade at CIS. Is there a time limit to how long I can speak?
It's three minutes, there are just two of you, so.
Okay, all right, excellent. So I'm here today to speak out against the program that has been created recently to allow churches to educate schoolchildren in Wadsworth. I believe it's called the Life Wise Program. You're all familiar with this. You're giving me blank stares. You're aware?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, excellent. So I'm sure you're also aware that the very first amendment in the Bill of Amendments states that Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion. In 1802, Thomas Jefferson wrote a letter to the Danbury, Connecticut Baptist Convention in which he expounded on this by stating that there must be a, quote, "wall of separation between church and state." The Supreme Court has upheld this several times, once in 1947 in Everson versus the Board of Education, in which they ruled that the government cannot promote religion. In Anglo and Vital, 1962, the court ruled that a short school prayer authorized by the New York Public School officials violated the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. So you are not only morally obligated to eliminate this program to prevent bullying through the formation of cliques based on identity, the inadvertent and/or deliberate apostilization of non-Christians by participating students, and the erosion of work by our brilliant and dedicated educators, but also you are bound by your oath to this Constitution to abandon this program. I noted that you all pledged allegiance to the flag. Do any of you believe that you know better than Thomas Jefferson? That was a question you're welcome to answer.
And actually, a feedback session, you're welcome to address this.
Okay. Listen, I call upon you to vote to eradicate the program right now. I challenge you to be bold, to uphold the Constitution, to do your duty as educators first and foremost, and to abandon this program, which has no place in our public schools. Do any of you have the courage to bring that to a vote? Blank stares. Yeah. My name is Matthew Assenti. I live at 432 Wolf Avenue. You will be hearing from me again. I look forward to interacting with you in ongoing meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Assenti. And you also want to address the board? Or no? Sorry.
Yeah, come on, come on.
I'm not much of a speaker.
That's okay.
I'll tell you that right now. So don't expect anything fancy from me.
Can you hold the mic?
I'm a 57-year resident of Wadsworth.
Talk into that so we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. And I've seen all the sports programs, and I'm here to try to make Wadsworth proud like they are right now. They've got the best program. I was so impressed. I was invited to a reverse raffle. Larry Karas and I, which is the head coach at Mount Union, came on a Tuesday and had a chalkboard thing. And then Todd had us come over there. There were 400 people there, all pushing touch football, flag football, and football period. We have got one heck of a coach. I'll tell you, he puts in more time with least... Well, the weight room isn't worth nothing. I'll tell you, it is terrible. I get two games every Friday night. I recruit, I've recruited every Wadsworth student that has went to Mount Union, and we've had some good ones. But this weight room, all the, most of the school, I'll tell you, I had an older gentleman tell me once, the architects build monuments to themselves. If they would take and give five schools a big, and there is more wasted room in this school than I have ever seen. Medina, too. I mean, all of them I go to, the new ones. They are actually a monument to the thing. And what I'm here pushing is let's try to get a weight room, not two, two before rooms. John Gamoglia was smart enough to push and got the weight room. And you see where our wrestling program is? Do you see where our football program is? Everybody loves winning. It brings communities together. Well, Barberton started to win it. They're packing the stadium now. Before, they couldn't get anybody to even come to it. It's, but you have to have the tools to win. You cannot do it. Mount Union has won 24 conference titles in a row. We've won 12 national championships. And how many banquets we've had? 12. If we don't win, that is a mentality there. And it breeds good things. But baseball's got a big, big building out there, and that weight room, I would like to invite some of you to go to Avon, Avon Lake, Hoben, Walsh. We look like we're the poor guys of the, on the block. And our football team and wrestling, the rest of the sports used to be here. Our girls' basketball used to be here. But now, we're down here. And the only reason we're down here is on kind of football and wrestling. And if you do not have a weight room, bands, and the right stuff, he's got junior high kids coming up and lifting with the varsity, which I think is wonderful. But were any of you at that, uh, that reverse raffle?
I was not, I was out of town.
Well, I'll tell you what, I've been around a lot of racing and stuff. But you talk about somebody getting behind it. These Wadsworth fans, football fans or any of them, it was unbelievable. I was so impressed. I said, I'm gonna come to the school board and voice my opinion of what I think about our weight room.
Thank you.
Do you guys like to win?
Thank you, we appreciate you doing so. I didn't catch your name, though. I apologize.
Joe Garn.
And your address?
8895 Rivers Texas.
Thank you. Thanks for addressing the board.
Pardon?
Thank you for addressing the board.
Oh, I'm done.
Thank you. And Mr. Assenti, if you review our board footage from February and March, I believe you'll see our discussions on religious time release instructions and the changes we made to that policy.
I learned about this program yesterday, yesterday.
February, March is...
And I'm on fire.
What, I don't know.
I'm on fire, you guys. And listen, I'm just the first parent here. I promise you, the more people learn about this, the more you'll hear about it. I don't know, it's, it's disrespectful.
Thank you.
If I, if it's okay, I'll contact you.
I'd love for you to.
Yeah, I will. I've got your address, and so I should be able to get a number. So I...
You have to share it.
Yeah, go ahead, that's okay.
I'll write it down for you.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. And Mr. Garn, I think what you're talking about probably fits into the committee that you heard the board having some discussion on earlier. So just would tell you that...
Hey, I'm 87 years old, and what I know, I know about football and sports. And I could not, I didn't know anything about that at the time. If you would see the participation, they got an NFL, local winner coming up and speaking, and he spoke for nothing, he was so impressed.
Yeah.
It was just amazing. I, I mean, I've been around a lot of things, but I have never seen the participation. And they had, I think, 10 scholarships that they helped athletes, wrestlers, football players, and they issued. And I'll tell you, they had, I guess, three years, and I never paid for that.
It's more than 10 years, it's more than 10 years, Mr. Garn.
Pardon?
It's more than 10 years, and it's through the youth football program.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not the reverse raffle through the boosters club.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. I, I mean, I was amazed. I have, and my son played P D football. I mean, you know, and he came through the school, and his picture's on there.
Thanks.
Mr. Garn, I'll keep you updated on the work of that committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time coming out.
If I have to come back, I'll come back.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not bad.
Thank you.
And thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Wadsworth is brilliant, a community. I mean, like I tell you, I've been here 56 years. But thank you all so much.
Thanks, Joe.
I hope I wasn't too blunt.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Turn it back over to, to Dr. Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to personnel consent items tonight. For your consideration, have items one through four. There is also an item that came out in the addendum 1C2, which is a certified substitute, Mackenzie Monroe. And I'd like to verbally add a 1C3 tonight, so another certified substitute, Mary Beth Basley. So at this time, I recommend to you personnel consent items one through four with the addendum 1C2 and the verbal addition 1C3.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Gary McComas?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Moving on to action consent items tonight, there's items one through 25. For your consideration, 24 and 25 came out on the addendum, sent out to this afternoon. Couple notes on a few of these. First of all, want to thank item four, the Wadsworth Performing Arts Foundation that was mentioned earlier. And there's some additional information written on the details sheet that accompanies the board agenda. But just a huge thank you to all that have been involved in that over the years. That started as the foundation that raised private funds to renovate OJ Work Auditorium around the turn of the century. And as you heard earlier from Pam, has kind of evolved into supporting our fine arts programs with requests above and beyond normal operating budget. So in particular, you see on the agenda some different individuals that were noted, the late, this is Sandy Solero, Tony Solero, Chuck Parsons, Jim McElvein, Bob Schoonover, and many others that were involved in contributing to make all of that happen. Also want to thank the Wadsworth Wrestling Club and the High School PTO After Prom Committee for their donations as well. Item seven, the recommendation for the 2024-25 bus and vehicle routes. Just want to take a moment to note the work of Jesse Widmer, our transportation supervisor. While it's her job, that's a huge lift every year, getting all those routes in place and fine tuning them, tweaking them, adjusting to a lot of different needs of students in the district. Jesse does a great job with that. Item nine, the Bear Cub Academy rates, is written on the details sheet. We continue to go through an analysis of this year in and year out. We're getting closer to being back to breaking even, which is where we were before COVID with, with the Bear Cub Academy. So we've been, we've chosen to do this over incremental increases rather than a large substantial increase all at one time. And so for, I think, the third year, you're being asked to increase our rates again, and we will buy a dollar, and we will take a look again at where we're at at the end of the current school, or the upcoming school year for any recommendations that could be forthcoming for future years. We do believe that even with the additional increase, that our rates are still very, very competitive for families in regards to providing a quality before and after-school program for students. Item 11 is an urgent necessity resolution for a replacement chiller at Lincoln Elementary School. You're aware that we had to close school towards the end of the school year in May because the chiller went down. We've been working through getting some additional quotes. And so tonight, we've worked through the company that we're comfortable with, Klein Mechanical, is before you in that urgent necessity. If you approve it, we're at six-week lead time, so we are looking at having it in place prior to when the heat returns in the spring. We do have a current issue at Lincoln Elementary School. The system is down, and we have a temporary unit that is in the process of being installed that will get us through the fall, probably into October, when we would no longer need air. That should be in place prior to the start of the school year. And then item 20, I wanted to note the purchase of 385 and 425 Thornway for carpentry builds. One of those two properties will be used for the upcoming year. The purchase that you had made previously in April for the property on South Avenue here in town will be, another will be pushed to the future. Our plan on that property is a duplex or a triplex, and we're not ready for that for the upcoming year. But with your approval, we will have not only this year, but two additional years ready to go with our carpentry program, which is moving more in the direction that we're trying to, so that we're not running behind once we finish the one, trying to scramble and get something in place for the next, for the next year. So at this time, I recommend to you action consent items one through 25.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Doug?
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Gary McComas?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Gary McComas?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Thank you, Doug. Amanda, would you like to say to that day?
Yeah, our friends in Columbus are still on their break, so I don't have anything substantial to report, so we'll wait till they come back and I'll fill you in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to board member items. I'll lead for a change, and I will simply say congratulations to our carpentry team for the sale and build of their last property. I couldn't attend this year, but that was a very nice sale, so thank you. Doug? Gary?
Yeah, well, just want to welcome everybody back to a successful start of a new school year. I think it's, Tim and I were talking, it's just like summer went by so fast. It just seems like we just started, but here we are. So I know everybody's excited, at least I think. I'm going to go with that they're excited to get everything started back up, and kids want to be here. So we just hope everybody has a safe and easy start to the school year. Got a lot of buzz going around, a lot of the sports are getting started, and I know that I'll let Amanda talk about one of them. But volleyball is, girls volleyball's going to be a really good season for them. We have a lot of high expectations. We have a lot of really good players this year, so if you get a chance, maybe you want to come out and support that.
Thanks, Gary. Julie?
I too want to welcome everybody back. Can't believe that summer is over. I want to thank all of the individuals involved with the Summer Feeding Medina County Bag Program. We are making our last delivery to our families this Wednesday. And then kind of keep your eye open, we're going to be rolling out Neighborhood Bridges Wadsworth, which is something that's going to be extraordinary for all of our families here in need.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks for your leadership in the, over the summer. Tim?
Yeah, can't believe it. It's the middle of August, and, you know, a few days, we'll be starting school, so I know everybody's excited, or at least will be hopefully excited. Hopefully, your students that are watching at home are, you know, adjusting their sleep patterns so that they can be ready for school next week. I think of all the, the parents that are about to send their first child off to school, kindergarten or whatever, and just thinking about them, that's always a big adjustment. But good times are ahead, and we take a lot of pride in our elementary schools. So for all those that are about to send your kid to school for the first time, I hope you feel comforted that your kids are in good hands. And lastly, on my way out the door to come to the meeting tonight, there were a group of three basketball players on the girls' basketball team going door to door, as were many of the other athletes in town for the Patriot Drive. So hopefully, if you were able to support the Wadsworth Athletic Program, please do so.
Thanks, Tim, absolutely. Amanda?
Yes, as we begin school, this is personally the first year for me that I don't have anybody going back anywhere to any school at all, so it's kind of weird. And then I was, as Tim was talking, I was remembering the first day for my son, who was my first, and I can't believe I actually followed the bus all the way to school. So, so best wishes to everybody as we, and everything turned out fine. I had no reason to worry, but very exciting for the, for the new year to start. Really happy to hear that we have the land for the carpentry program for the next two or three years.
have anybody going back anywhere to any school at all, so it's kind of weird. And then I was, as Tim was talking, I was remembering the first day for my son, who was my first, and I can't believe I actually followed the bus all the way to school. So, so best wishes to everybody as we, and everything turned out fine. I had no reason to worry, but, um, very exciting for the, for the new year to start. Um, really happy to hear that we have the land for the carpentry program for the next two or three years. That, uh, that's just amazing, and, and, you know, the, the program and, and the, the sales and the auction, it's just been absolutely tremendous, so I was very happy for that. Um, thank you to Andy for, uh, all the work you're doing with the scheduling and the enrollments and, and things like that, especially the, the elementary schools. I know it's, uh, it's a challenge each year to try to maintain our goal of neighborhood schools, and, um, you handle it like a pro every year, so I just wanted to, um, to thank you for that. Um, again, uh, our athletic programs have a car raffle, um, currently going on, um, 20 bucks a ticket, um, or three for 50 for a Chevy Trax that was donated to us by Serpentine Ni. Um, I believe we have it on our website and our Facebook page, or...
Yeah, we'll double check the website.
Okay. Okay, but, um, if, if you're interested and you don't know one of the, the kids in any of the programs, um, and it's, it's for, for all the sports programs, but, um, give one of us a call, and we want to try to make the most of that, uh, really nice, uh, donation. Um, football, last scrimmage before, uh, we start the season and beat Barberton, but, um, Thursday night, uh, we play Brunswick in a scrimmage at Art Right, um, so very excited about that. Dana Hire reports from the band that they actually got their whole program done and ready to go, um, during band camp, which was absolutely amazing. So it sounds like we have yet again another fantastic group of kids. Um, and, um, I know our girls' tennis is, is off and, off and running, uh, as well, and Gary mentioned volleyball. Um, one thing I did see about the tennis courts, um, and I just want to say it publicly as well, um, our coach actually had to go out and scrub, um, tape lines and chalk lines off of our brand new tennis courts over by the middle school because somebody thought it was appropriate for them to be able to draw lines to play pickleball, and our girls had, uh, had a match this morning. And there's absolutely no reason that our coaches should have to do that, nor should anybody have any inkling or idea that they should be able to do that. So I know we're, we're working with administration on that, but, um, I was actually pretty appalled to see that something like that was, uh, was going on. So please, um, please refrain from doing that if you're, if you're listening, because, um, you know, while these are all public, um, improvements and, and community things, ultimately our first and foremost, the reason we have these are for our high school, uh, high school kids and our programs, so, um, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you. Um, uh, at this time, we need a motion to approve the ratification of our resignations listed.
So moved. Second.
Doug?
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Gary McComas?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we will, um, go into executive session unless you have your handlers, Mr. Moore, um, to discuss employment, compensation, and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law rules or state statutes. So if I can get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Doug?
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Gary McComas?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Thank you.